I'd like to call the June 2014 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item invocation, Ms. Heathridge?
We will not lose heart, therefore we do not lose heart. Though outwardly we are wasting away, yet inwardly we are being renewed day by day. For our light and momentary troubles are achieving for us an eternal glory that far outweighs them all. So we fix our eyes not on what is seen, but on what is unseen. For what is seen is temporary, but what is unseen is eternal. Comes from 2 Corinthians 4:16-18. Just like to wish everyone a happy 4th and just remember what the 4th of July stands for. Be safe out there and have a good time with your family and friends, but don't ever forget what the 4th of July represents.
Can we now have a moment of silence and please keep in mind those who are less fortunate than us? Thank you. Next pledge of allegiance, did we have somebody from Knott's Island that was going to do that or no? Okay. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, school spotlight, Tommy Wilson, principal at Knott's Island Elementary School?
Last but not least this year.
Yeah. Save the best for last, Tommy.
As we were thinking about our score improvement plan this past year and where we wanted to go forward, we had some deep discussions about what types of new initiatives we wanted to take on. And we wanted to look at how can we enhance our instructional practices at our school. And one way we decided to do that over this past year is to incorporate projects-based learning activities throughout our curriculum. And that's what we have been working on for this past year. Last summer I met with our teaching staff before we left for the summer. And my challenge to them for the year was see how they could incorporate at least two full-fledged project-based learning activities through this school year. And for the most part, they have done that. And I just want to share a few minutes of what this entails and then show a quick video about what we've done this year. Basically, not sure what it is. Project-based learning is a teaching method in which students gain knowledge and skills by working for an extended period of time to investigate and respond to a complex question, problem, or challenge. And some of the positive effects that we have seen from this through project-based learning is it does provide engaging learning opportunities and provides real-world relevance to our students through some of their projects that they do. Students can basically, they understand the content more deeply. They also learn how to take responsibility for their learning and hopefully build their self-confidence. They solve problems, work collaboratively together as teams, they communicate their ideas with each other, and be creative innovators. Some of the, there are seven key components to project-based learning that have to be in place in order to be considered a project-based learning activity. The first one there is the activity has to teach some type of significant academic content. Usually from our previous experiences, we see where usually the teacher provides the information to the students through different types of means. And then there is some type of commutative activity that they do at the very end of it, based on what they've learned. Project-based learning is the students are more deeply involved in the learning process. They're doing the research, they're doing, they're engaged, they're doing their own learning, you know, with teacher guidance of course. It also has 21st century competencies and skills. We talk about it all the time, how it, such as problem-solving, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity innovation, which are being taught through the lesson and which our students are, will need in order to survive in the world ahead. It also has in-depth inquiry, where students are engaged for an extended period of time, asking questions, using resources, and developing answers to questions. One of the key concepts of project-based learning is a driving question. There is one key concept through the whole project that students try to answer. It's usually an open-ended question that students understand and find intriguing, which captures their attention, and they flame, they frame their whole coursework around that, answering that question. And there's different ways to answer that question, we'll find out. One key component of it is there's a voice and choice. Students have the opportunity, get options, and they have opportunities to do what they want to do with it. They're allowed to make choices. They're about the product they're going to produce, how they will work, how they will use their time, all that, they get to make choices about. They have opportunities to critique and revise. The project includes processes for students to give and receive feedback from their peers and also from the teacher before they do their final project. And the last key component of it is there has to be a public audience. How do we get kids to be more comfortable speaking in public, starting at a small age? For project-based learning, they have to present their project to their class, to staff members, or to the community members. And we'll see some of that in our video in just a second. And at this time, I'm going to show you a short video of some of the projects that we've done this year, give you kind of an idea of what's been going on at Knott's Island through this project base.
Knott's Island teachers embraced project-based learning this year. Each grade level incorporated several inquiry projects to guide students through problem-solving skills, research, and presentations.
Today, we're going to be doing an experiment. And with our experiment, we are going to be using a car, okay? And we are going to be making our car out of legumes. Now, this is the big part, okay?
After studying habitats and adaptations, Ms. McLeod's 4th grade class, where our students were asked to create a new animal for a specific habitat. During Ms. Garner's art class, students created drawings, orchalages, to create visual image of the new hybrid animal. Ms. Haskell guided students on incorporating their artwork into digital presentations that showed how the new animal would survive in the habitat.
And then, just, you just push enter. Enter on the keyboard. Wait a second. That's not what you want, is it? Hit back. So if you, you want this to come down one line?
No.
Okay. You want, that's a cursor. See, you just push enter, it goes to the next one, okay?
Has a baboon tail and a big red butt. Baboon butt, a tail and feathers. This animal has a zebra torso and a smooth zebra pattern. This le, this little creature has a draft head and a long draft snip.
We're learning how they were similar to us and how they were different from us. That was our big question. We wanted to know what they had in common with us and what was totally different from the way we do things. So we had different groups take different parts of pilgrim life, and that's what they did in the project. All right. The first group is Paige and Isabel. They have rods and chores.
Good manners. Children ate standing up during the meal. You cannot talk at the dinner table unless an adult talks to you. It is good manners to eat with your fingers. Pilgrims use plates called trenchers. You could share with.
We teach Mr. Wright presented students with a problem scenario. The students were to be fitness experts and had to design a fitness and nutrition plan for a specific client. Students had to present information about their business and how they could help the client.
Hours open Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. You get 75% off your first pack. And our person's name is Keith. He's a male. He weighs 350 pounds. His age is 21, and he has no problems.
He's 250 pounds. He gets along well with others, and that's it, sick and obese. How to help Bobby? Every day, Bobby's going to do 25 minutes of jogging on the treadmill, 15 minutes of weightlifting, four exercises and push-ups. Why don't you follow our eyes?
Representative Gibson, do you have a question?
Yes. How does Bobby and Lily help the island?
The seafood industry has been a large part of the eastern coastline's economy. A large part of this economic state is due to the blue crab, because the blue crab is the most economically valuable fishery to the state. Fishermen last year caught over 30 million blue crabs of the value of over $26 million. That brought down to over 29 million hard crabs with the value of $23 million.
This is Emma and Lily. Our 5th grade class read a book, The Lorax. We thought we should get a message out to the world. We need people to stop littering and be more responsible with what we throw away. Do you know what these things do to the plants and animals? This also affects people. The world is in our hands. Some people take this world for granted. The earth needs our help.
After studying human impact on the environment and reading The Lorax, Ms. Bernhard's 5th grade students were asked how can they make a difference with an environmental message? Students presented their message and ways to share that with the world. Ideas included a message to the UN, a nonprofit organization, and an endangered animal global watchdog site that could be an app. As staff reflect on this year's experience, we will bring forward many ideas for the next year's lessons and continue to incorporate project-based learning.
Do you think PBLs enhanced your student engagement in lessons?
Yes, definitely. The situation with PBLs is that the students are basically presented the information for the project. They're also, you share with them the resources they can use to help them with the project, and then you kind of turn them loose. And that is the beauty of it. They have to be engaged to depend, and depend on one another for their final grade. And that's what I like so much about it.
I would ask the kids a question such as, how does your environment and your climate affect the way you live, rather than just assigning them different areas to learn about? And I found that the kids were more excited with the choices that they were making and with the collaboration that they were doing, when it was set up in this style.
Methodology improves student skills with public speaking, as well as building confidence in the students' ideas and creativity. Classroom teachers work collaboratively with each other and resource teachers to connect the whole school around student projects. And this has been a great experience for us all.
That's just to highlight what we've done this year. We will continue with this next year as well, too. We'll get more in-depth with it in the years to come. Thank you.
Tommy, I like the fact that this project-based learning takes the emphasis off road memorization and puts more of an emphasis on critical thinking skills and logical reasoning, which, you know, kids definitely need these days.
And the sooner you start them with that, younger the age, the better off they're going to be in the years ahead, so.
Really, really. Thank you very much.
Dr. Godney, may I add just a moment, please? I want to recognize Tommy and his staff, because they were selected to present at our Region 1 Summer Institute, which is going to be occurring next week. And so they'll have a chance to be able to share what they've implemented at Knott's Island with the more than 18 districts across our region. So we're real proud of them for that. We have several people that are doing that, but I wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tommy and your staff. Okay, next item on the agenda, June 30th work session update. We heard presentations on a number of different items during the work session. One was child nutrition price increases and food bids, another, safe schools report, data collection report, local CTE plan presentation, revisions to the AIG plan, approval of the Title I Plan, budget amendments, and audit contract. Also heard an update on the teacher and teacher assistant representatives to the Board of Education. And also, the first reading of updated Policies 3000 that included instructional materials and curriculum aspects. Next, approval for the board agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item was going to be our student school board member reports, but they are on summer vacation, so we won't have that. Next, overnight field trip request, Ms. Schuler?
Yes, some of these have already occurred, and you approved through a poll. CCHS State Track Championship in Greensboro, that was May 9th and 10th. CCHS State Golf Tournament in Pinehurst, that was May 11th and 12th. JP NAP FBLA National Conference was held in Nashville, Tennessee, that was May, or excuse me, June 28th through July the 3rd. They're there now. And Currituck County High School Football Camp at Chawan University, that is July the 28th and July the 30th. And Currituck County Middle School Overnight Football Camp at Currituck County Middle School, that's August 15th and 16th. And JP NAP Early College, oh, excuse me, I went on, I went on to the next item. I apologize. But anyway, our students have a lot going on this summer as well, so.
Great. Do I have a motion for approval of the overnight field trip request?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, JP NAP Early College STEM Challenge, Crystal Schultz and students.
Hello. I have my team with me. I have Wyatt Fairbanks, Angie Chen, and Kami McMahon. I want to give you a brief overview of what that STEM challenge is, show you a video, and we're actually going to present the awards to them today and give you a chance to ask them any questions. They participated in a Carolina STEM Challenge. It is a statewide challenge. It's only the second year of this challenge. Their dilemma this year was a battery dilemma, where they were to construct a working battery using only either vegetables, fruit, or juices. And they were given just some strips of metal and a multimeter to check to see if they were actually producing any voltage. They were awarded points on a couple of different things. One, how much voltage they produced. And another was the video presentation or submission that they did. Now, during that video, they had to show this battery actually working, talk about the process of engineering it, as well as reflecting on that battery that they created. So they weren't giving any instructions on how to do this. They were just given the instructions on you're going to create this battery, and this is all you have. And so they had to kind of fill in and test different materials to see if they could get the most voltage. And we were really excited to hear that not only did we place, but we placed first place, competing against the other challenges as well. Now, I'm going to go ahead and show you their video before we present the award.
Experimenting with various organic substances and different combinations of the metals provided, our team decided that magnesium anodes coupled with copper cathodes set in grape juice was the most conductive to electricity.
We will now display the direct current voltage of our battery using a multimeter.
As you can see, our battery generates approximately 3.88 volts of direct current.
We will now display our battery powering an LED light.
After disconnecting the multimeter, we have connected positive wires to the copper cathodes and negative wires to the magnesium anodes of our battery.
As you can see, the light is very strong, and we will also show that with the lights off.
We will now demonstrate a buzzer attached to our battery. When the positive and negative wires are connected to the positive and negative poles on the buzzer, a shrill noise is produced.
This concludes the Appendix E Carolina STEM Challenge Battery Dilemma. Thank you for watching.
So that was the video that was submitted, and you can see that it showed their device working, in addition to them being able to change up whether it was just reading the multimeter powering that noise maker or the LED light. I want to give you a chance to ask them any questions if you'd like.
How did you decide what material to put the cathodes and anodes in?
Well, the challenge was to use organic materials, and we weren't really decisive. We wanted to try a bunch of different things. So we tried potatoes, orange juice, oranges, limes, et cetera, and we found that grape juice had the most direct current voltage.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
Mine was kind of the same. Was it the acidity in the grape juice is what made it produce more electricity versus like a lemon juice or an orange juice?
We're not quite sure why it worked. But it worked pretty well. I don't know, I think grape juice might just be really, really good.
Other questions? Okay, Ms. Schultz, before you present the awards, STEM, is that science, technology? Is it engineering and mathematics?
Yes, it's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So the engineering part was really creating that device that would work. And again, you know, they didn't have any background in this. They were presented with the problem, and they had to figure out what they were going to do to be able to power that battery. So, you know, as far as like the cathodes and anodes, those are things that they learned along the way. So that's, you know, the science part of that as well. Technology, be able to do that submission, and of course, being able to calculate that voltage would be the math part.
I have one more question. How long versus a battery, how long a life did that battery have? How long would it produce electricity? Did you ever try that?
Did it ever turn off?
It never ran out, but the magnesium was dissolving in the grape juice. It wouldn't have lasted long.
Yeah. Because that's another thing, is they were given different types of metal to use, and they chose the magnesium to work the best. But like Wyatt noticed that its life wasn't going to last forever. He would have had to replace that metal long before I think he would have had to replace the juice.
That's great. Other questions?
No, I just, I remember doing experiments with the potatoes. You guys probably did too, when you were in elementary, because I taught 3rd and 4th, so yeah. Great, great job.
I'd like to thank them for participating, because this was in addition to them keeping up with all their chemistry. And this wasn't something that happened in one day. It took them, you know, a few trials and a few days to commit to that. Then their spare time, they'd come in and work on their videos. So I definitely appreciate their effort, and we're excited again to be first place in the STEM Challenge.
Thank you.
Before they sit down, would each one of you come back up to the microphone and tell us your name again?
Did you say each of them?
Each of them.
Well, my name's Angie Chen.
My name's Kami McMahon.
And I'm Wyatt Fairbanks.
And can I say that I was at the award ceremony for JP NAP towards the end of the school year, and I recognize all three of them. They were getting awards for other things too, so congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations once again. Okay, next item, approval of school lunch price increase. Angela, would you come up and tell, you know, the public why we need to increase the price of lunches?
Sure. Each year for the last three years, oop, each year for the last three years, I've been presenting to the board our results for our paid lunch equity tool that the United States Department of Agriculture requires us to do each year. It compares what we have as a difference of our paid and our free lunch cost reimbursements to what our average price is. And this year, we were again lacking a 10 cent. It's based off the consumer index rate. My projection is that each year, we're probably going to be faced with this requirement to do this. This year, we were at 11 cent deficit, so a 10 cent increase we can cap out at, which would place us from 225 to 235, and then from 250 to 260. And I've also presented to the board an increase for breakfast. And I did Ms. Dwan research while we were here. Shontae looked it up. At least 2004 is as far back as we can go on our electronic device look-up. And it's been a dollar since then. So we put in a request from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five to help with the accommodation of required fruit and vegetables for breakfast this year.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments? Yes, the reason I called Angela up, I just wanted the public to know that this just isn't some arbitrary reason that we're using for raising the price of lunches and breakfast.
I don't want it to have to.
It's because we have to?
Yes.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment session, Ms. Kinsel?
You got there faster than I was, sorry. I just wanted to take this opportunity to announce to the board members, as well as to our public, that we have four very distinguished teachers in our midst. About April, the Governor's Teaching Network was introduced, and it was an opportunity for teachers to apply, to submit resources or plans for professional development that's based on action research to the state for review. And in turn, those selected would receive a $10,000 reward, if you will, for the work that they were committed to doing. It was a quite extensive application process, where they had to submit a very detailed plan, as well as some sample of their work. I'm pleased to say that out of the 450 statewide teachers that were selected for this program, we have four right here in Currituck. And they are Jim Wright from Knott's Island, who submitted to create lesson planning for the PE, health and PE area. We also had Melanie Anderson, who was from Moyack Middle School. And she has been experimenting with a flipped classroom and creating resources using our home base and open class resources. Carol Frazier from Charboro Elementary School is creating an action research project based on written comprehension and the use of reading 3D. And Luanna Palamatecas, our District's Teacher of the Year and Music Teacher at Charboro and Moyack Elementary School, is going to be creating resources, teaching materials for music, obviously. So we are very proud and very pleased to be able to announce that we have greatness in our midst, and it's no big surprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. And please send a mark, congratulations. That ends the public comment session. Sandy was the only one that signed up. Next information items, the next work session will be August 7th, 2014, at the Professional Learning Center at NAP at 5 o'clock. Next Board of Education meeting will be August 7th, 2014, right here at 6:30. And the next item on the agenda, board member comments, Ms. Heathridge?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate all the seniors that graduated, wish them well in their future endeavors. I would also like to congratulate all of our teachers and staff. You did a great job this year. I hope this summer you have a restful, peaceful, relaxing summer. I know a lot of you take second jobs in the summer months, so I hope this summer you I know a lot of you take second jobs in the summer months, so I hope you can stop and smell the roses along the way. And thanks again for doing an awesome job for our students of Currituck County.
Mr. Simmons?
As I always say, good things happening in Currituck County schools. Graduation, what a great job our kids did and our faculty did. If you saw some of the talent with some of the kids performing, from singing to giving speeches, what a great job they did. Project graduation, I heard went off well, kids had a good time. Long night for some of our teachers who went to it. Knott's Island, you see what's going on with our kids. Our kids are getting a good education here in Currituck County. And, once again, teachers who are on, you know, when you say a teacher is on summer vacation, there's not really a vacation. Teachers are preparing already for next year, so just take some time off, enjoy your, your break, and be back in August.
Great. Ms. Crapp?
Yes, I just want to say, I think I met myself coming and going in Currituck County the last week of school, but I did visit every school, and some of them twice. Visited and got to do lots of the awards ceremonies, not everyone, but lots of them. And we have just a phenomenal, just phenomenal staff and faculty, our teachers, our staff. We just, we are blessed here in Currituck. We just don't know, you just don't know how much we appreciate it. And, like they all said, you need to enjoy some summertime fun, and it's unpaid vacation, make sure everybody knows that. But enjoy, and have a good time.
Great. Ms. Gaddis?
Not to sound repetitive, but I also attended a lot of the awards ceremonies into the year, things going on around Currituck. It was great to see all of the hard work that our teachers and our staff are putting in, paying off and seeing the hundreds of kids standing up there getting awards and being recognized for their hard work. And none of that would be possible if we didn't have teachers leading the way, and administration and everything else. So, we do hope y'all are having a great time off, and we look forward to starting the school year back up with you, and thank you for all your hard work.
I got to see a couple very interesting projects and exhibits. One was called Statistically Reading, and that was done by Valerie Person, who was an AP English teacher for us, and Robert Griffin, who's an AP Statistics teacher. And they did a cooperative project, and the kids had to come up with something involved in literature, and then had to do some statistical research on it. And I know Mr. Simmons was there, I saw him, and it was very interesting. And after having taught educational research and statistics myself, those kids did a really good job. Another project that I saw was an art exhibit at Focus 252 Gallery in Grandy, and it was conducted by the students, and they had to display some of their artwork, and it was for AP Studio 2D Design. And they had some phenomenal photography and artwork there. And last, I would like Ms. Ethrich and Ms. Gaddis to go out front here, to do some modeling.
[laughing]
Because people have seen the red shirts, they probably can't see what it says on them.
Okay.
See, your one chance to get to be a model.
Thanks.
Yeah, we just want, want everyone to know that we support public education. We support our teachers and our staff. We're behind you 100%. I feel like, for me personally, over the last almost four years, we've opened up communication with the teachers, and we feel like they can come to us with any, any problems or questions they may have, and just speak with us openly about, about anything and everything. And we just want y'all to know that we're behind you.
Great.
I don't think I could say it any better. You're all there.
Really. Thanks. And, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like all the teachers and administrators and that to know that we really do support them. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.